And I like West Cliff because it's not that busy. People haven't really found West Cliff yet.
I've never been down there.
Oh, see.
Yeah.
And then they would look at you like, "What is that?"
I know where it is, I've just never been.
Let's bring to order the meeting of the Woodland Park Plan Commission for a team. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. DeVoe.
President.
Mr. Watson.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Carrick.
Here.
Ms. Good.
Here.
Mr. Hartfield.
Here.
Mr. Pendlin.
Here.
Mr. Scanlon.
Here.
And Mr. Schrader.
Here.
We have full attendance this evening.
Join us with a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A group of minutes, everybody have a chance to make a beat for that? John, we don't hear you with your microphone. Should I go out louder? Please, with your microphone. Thank you.
Okay. Better?
Well, let's see it.
We're good. Approval of minutes, everybody good with that? In motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Always in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public hearings. Item A, sub 18-00, wait a minute, can I jump ahead now? 18-003, Woodland Park Saddle Club filing number one. Final plat requested by C. Mahoney, property owner representative, for the approval of a final plat of 5.92 acre single lot in the unplatted portion of the west one half, south 30, T., what is that?
Township.
Township, 12 south, R. 68 W. 6 prime Meridian, I know that one. 19250 east, US Highway 24, Woodland Park, in the service commercial SC zone. Who is going first this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to call on the applicant to go first.
Okay, thank you. You guys decide.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. As I do have a business relationship involving the future development of this parcel, to alleviate any appearance of bias, I feel I must recuse myself from this issue.
Do we have any objection to his recusal? If not, you are recused.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of planning commission staff.
Wait, wait.
Do I have to say that all over again? I'm not going to.
All right. I am Eric Smith. My address is 750 East Highway 24 here in Woodland Park. I'm here tonight on behalf of both M3XP2, which I am a managing member of, as well as Chuck Mahoney, who is here in the audience, representing the Saddle Club as the owner, current owner of the property. So, I just have a quick PowerPoint here. The project was approved, the conditional use permit and the site plan by this body in May of this year, and approved at city council in July of this year. So, we're currently before you tonight on the final plat application, which requires this hearing as well as two city council hearings as well, and more. I know we'll speak to that more about those dates. But once this final plat is approved, then we will be able to move forward with our project and start the construction process. So, the location of the property is in between Safeway and Walmart along the west side of Highway 24. Troll Road is located here, the Swiss Chalet, and so the site sits between Highway 24 and Fountain Creek. This is a copy of the final plat showing one lot, which is 4.75 acres in size, and then tract A, which is 1.17 acres in size. One of the comments that the staff requested was a 20-foot wide trail easement within tract A, and so that's been provided to provide for the location of the trail, the extension of the trail. We will have a common access drive with the 10 acres that resides to the north of the site, which is currently undeveloped and unplatted, and that common driveway will serve both the self-storage project as well as future development and uses, current uses even, for the 10 acres to the north. That is a private roadway and will be constructed, of course, as part of our project, and there will be a maintenance agreement between the two parties, the two landowners, to maintain that infrastructure. I guess the other thing I'd point out, maybe I didn't point that out in the previous hearing, but this is the city's lift station here, and actually, so the new driveway that we're putting in will provide better access to the city's lift station. So, that's one of the pluses to what we're doing. As Lore has outlined within the staff report, the final plat complies with all city code and design standards, and she's probably going to go over those in more detail. As far as the conditions of record go, I spoke with staff today and requested a small change to item A, and that's shown in black. And essentially, I asked for that so that we didn't plat the property, and six months from now, the city says, "Well, you need to go build this trail," and we hadn't started development yet. So, we just want to build the trail with any development on Lot 1. So, that was the purpose of adding that language, just to be clear as to when it would be constructed. And then, item D, the city has spoken internally and has agreed to remove that condition as they don't believe that it's necessary, and Lore can speak to that in more detail or answer any questions you have related to that. Otherwise, we're in agreement with the conditions, and the final plat is actually being updated as we speak to take care of these conditions, and we will have that done before we get to city council. So, with that, I said it'd be short and sweet. You've probably heard enough of me later. So, are there any questions?
Anybody? Yeah, I have one question. The trail, the trail easement does appear in part across Lot 1 as well as Lot A. Is there a reason for that, or would it be more consistent have Lot 1 just follow the edge of it too rather than the easement across both lots?
Yeah, there's a little piece.
At the corner?
At the corner. It's the way it worked out based on where Lore asked us to place the easement. It really doesn't matter. So, there'll be a little encumbrance on Lot 1, and that is just how the lot line was drawn relative to the grades that are out there.
So, you understand that would affect like fencing wouldn't go all the way to the corner, for instance?
Sure. We're not planning any fencing at that location. The fencing will be tied to buildings, and so the building sits well off of that property line.
Thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
Is there any change in the size of the actual plat itself from what was originally submitted? Have you increased the size, same size roughly?
No. Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else?
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also have a brief PowerPoint presentation. It's not as colorful as the applicant's, but I hope to get through it, and if you have any questions, please let me know. So, this is final plat number 18003, titled BWP Saddle Club Final Plat. It is a request by Chuck Mahoney, who is the Saddle Club representative and is here in the audience tonight. It is for approval of a final plat for a minor subdivision of a total of 5.92 acres into one lot and one tract in that part of that section with an address of 19250 Highway 24 within the service commercial zone district. So, tonight we are here for the planning commission public hearing on this final plat, and it is September 13, 2018. The city council final plat public hearing has been scheduled for October 4, 2018. You'll recall that this commission did review the use permits and the site plan for this proposal. The proposal was for a self-storage warehouse for a 72,400 square foot facility, and it did go through planning commission with approval for both the conditional use and the site plan on May 24, and then again was ratified and approved by city council on July 19. This is the location of the site relative to Highway 24 within the city of Woodland Park, here on the southwest end of the city, west of Highway 24, on the east end of the city. And here is a vicinity map taken from the plat, which shows the entire parent parcel, approximately 13 acres, outlined in black here. And the 5.92 acre portion of this parent parcel is shown hatched on this particular vicinity map. You can see Highway 24 drawn by the applicant to the east of the subject parcel, Troll Road, Paradise Circle, and some of the other local streets within the city. You can see Fountain Creek on the border of the east end of this parent parcel. And then, this is Woodland Ave. Down here, it becomes County Road 21 within Tellar County, and these are some of the county roads that come off that area. This is just an aerial photo showing the site, a rough approximation of the plat and some of the surrounding land uses. The Woodland Park Mobile Home Village, Woodland Village Mobile Home Park, Fountain Creek here, running north-south, Tellar County on this side here, and Elk Grove Townhomes, Troll Road, Buzz Bees, portion of Tellar County in here. So, the 5.92 acre portion is shown in red here, the parent parcel encompasses this portion to the north, which will be retained by the Woodland Park Saddle Club, and this portion to the south, which is proposed to be conveyed. These are not to be platted at this time. We are only looking at plating this 5.92 acre portion of this 13-plus acre parent parcel. This is just a zoning map telling you the district boundaries for the service commercial zone district, for instance, and the site is right here in the middle of this dark purple zone, and it gives you an idea of some of the surrounding zone districts. PUD down below is the planned unit development for the Walmart. These are just some photos showing some of the site. The proposed plating area will be this area right here, where there's currently an arena for the Woodland Park Saddle Club. This is Highway 24 looking across from the Swiss Chalet onto the site, again, that portion of that area. And this is just another aerial showing you a close-up of what the site currently looks like. Here's Highway 24, this parcel, and you can see the, on the aerial, you can see the boundaries of the lift station that is owned by the city. Here's the current access coming down, which is currently gravel right now. And as the applicant said, he will be improving that, so that access to this facility and to the north parcel will be improved. And then, you can see where this portion here is all part of the C dot right-of-way, which is all of this, as it goes north and south. And then, this is where it will turn into that private road that he is plating half on this parcel, in Lot 1, and half of that road will go on this unplatted parcel via a private agreement, which will be handling maintenance of that road and upgrades, improvements to that road. What this also shows is the floodplain area, and the tract A will be this rectangular piece, and this will be the piece for Lot 1. And again, this is where the storage facility is proposed, and tract A, which is the floodplain, will remain undevelopable and unbuildable. This is the, an excerpt of the plat showing a graphic, again, showing the 4.75 acres that will become Lot 1, and the 1.17 acres which will become tract A. As the applicant stated, the trail is a 20-foot wide trail that comes through here. It is measured 20 feet wide from the eastern edge of the floodplain. That's how that was determined, and that's why it crosses into this little tiny corner down here. This plat also shows the proposed easements along the perimeter, the existing easements on the site, as well as the proposed road. This will be half of the access, and the other half will be up here, and then continue on until it intersects with the C dot right-of-way. One of the changes to this plat is that we've asked the applicant to put Troll Road on there because we thought that's what the applicant wanted in terms of the name of this road. We typically put names on plats. However, the applicant and staff is okay with changing that. They're looking at addressing this site off US Highway 24, and the upper portion, which will be retained by the Woodland Park Saddle Club, will maintain the current address, which is off of US Highway 24. So, we will not be requiring that it be called Troll Road, which is fine. So, we'll have him remove that from this plat. So, staff did a complete review and analysis of this final plat application, and we did a referral to the various Woodland Park, city of Woodland Park departments, including the utilities department, the public works, the police, and building departments. We also sent the plat out to the Northeast Tellar County Fire Protection District, REA, Black Hills, AHA, C dot, and Century Link. All notices that went out, all referrals that went out, and comments that were received back have been incorporated into the conditions, or amendments have been made to the plat by the applicant to address those. We honestly didn't receive any concerns from anyone, except utilities, and those easements have then been reflected. Public notice was done for this application. We did adjacent property owner notices to every property within 150 feet of this application. We did a poster notifying anybody that drives by of tonight's public hearing, and we also published tonight's hearing in the Courier. So, this is in the service commercial zone district, which is Section 1822 of the municipal code. 1822 states that this zone district is intended to provide commercial activities serving the entire community, including retail, service, office, large parking areas, et cetera. The permitted uses are the truck-trailer rental of Section 1809090 in our matrix, and conditional use is the self-storage warehouse, both of which the permitted use is outright permitted, and the conditional use has received city council approval for the warehouse storage facility. The limitations in the service commercial zone district include a maximum height of 35 feet, which the applicant will comply with when he submits for his zoning development permit. That's when we check to ensure that all of the limitations of the SC zone district will be complied with. He does have a minimum front, I'm sorry, the yard is a minimum front, setback of 50 feet, zero for the rear, side feet, side setback of 15 feet from the property line. All of these setbacks are in place and do not infringe on the developability of this lot or the subdivision that they've submitted in the plat configuration. The applicant does have a minimum of 50 feet of frontage on a public right-of-way, that is a frontage on, they have about 100 feet of frontage on the C dot right-of-way, just north of the Mobile Home Park. So, they meet that frontage requirement. They will submit plans that show their parking layout with their zoning development permit, as will they do for their fencing and shrubbery and landscaping signs are going to be reviewed via a separate permit, subject to Section 1848. The applicant will submit fees in lieu for that portion of the right-of-way that applies to right-of-way where we would normally require a sidewalk, but of course, we're not going to require a sidewalk adjacent to the C dot right-of-way in this case. So, he has accepted or agreed to fees in lieu for that portion, and the site is big enough and viable for a minimum of 25 percent lot for landscaping. So, the applicant will meet all of these zone requirements. So, with the final plat application, we did a complete review and analysis with municipal code Title 17, which deals with subdivisions. We find that it complies with Section 17.04, which is general provisions. The proposed subdivision is of such a character that it can be safely used for building purposes without danger to health or peril from fire, flood, or other menace. Provision is made for drainage, water, sewage, and public improvements, such as trails, transportation facilities, and improvements as proposed would conform to the comprehensive plan and other plans, like the parks, open space, trails, master plan, and the subdivision as proposed would comply with provides buildable envelopes and complies with the regulations in zoning and other regulations in municipal code. So, this application does fall under a minor subdivision classification per Section 1708380. Minor subdivisions go through a two-step process where they submit a vicinity plan and provide a concept plan to staff through pre-conference meetings, which this applicant has done, and then they submit their final plat draft, which this applicant has also done, and the draft was included in the staff report that was submitted for all of your So, the final plat staff does find complies with all of the requirements entitled 17, and all of the design standards in Section 1740, including adequate consideration for the site itself, streets, trails, intersections, and improvements and easements on lot configurations. Improvements related to subdivisions, staff finds that it does comply with Section 1744. Adequate consideration has been given to all surface improvements, utilities, and other surfaces that are necessary to make this a developable and buildable lot. So, staff does conclude with a recommendation of approval, subject to the following conditions. Prior to recording the MYLAR, we're asking that the plat be corrected. First one is adding a note that states non-motorized public 20-foot wide trail easement. Improvements within this easement shall be designed, constructed, and installed by the property owner. The trail design and improvements shall be approved by the city prior to construction and subject to guarantees and warranties to be determined by the city with the approval and acceptance. This trail is to be managed and maintained by the city. Staff does not object to the additional wording that the applicant has proposed in his presentation related to, with the development of Lot 1 after the first, after property owner in the first sentence. Condition B, staff adds, would like to add a plat note to the plat stating common ingress, egress, and utility easements. Improvements with this easement shall be designed, constructed, and installed by the property owner. The road design and improvements, and any road design and improvements within the C dot right-of-way shall be approved by the city slash C dot prior to construction and subject to the guarantees and warranties to be determined by the city C dot with the approval. This road is to be managed and maintained by the affected property owners. C, add another plat note, when repairs are necessary to the city's public infrastructure, i.e. water and sewer mains within public utility easements that are located on private property, then the city is not responsible to replace or repair any surface improvements, such as parking, lot, pavement, or concrete. D, note D, we had asked that the applicant include a note stating that the city shall not be obligated or responsible to improve the Fountain Creek floodplain, floodway for and erosion from Fountain Creek, or maintain the creek floodplain, floodway in any way. After some discussion internally with staff and with legal, we don't feel this plat note is necessary any longer, and don't object to removing it at this point as a condition, and don't require that it be added to the plat. Finally, condition two, prior to city execution of the MYLAR, the developer property owner shall, A, submit a letter to the city confirming his intent or the intent to construct and install the non-motorized trail according to city specifications; B, per Section 1833170 agree to pay fees in lieu of sidewalk, curb, and gutter for construction of that Highway 24 frontage; and C, submit a copy of the separate easement for the half-street for staff review and approval for the street that would be common to the northern unplatted portion. So, that concludes staff's presentation. We do recommend approval, finding compliance with the standards for subdivision. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Questions from staff? Anybody?
I have a question. During the original presentation by Mr. Smith, we had talked about the shrubbery and the planning of that berm that was along Highway 24, and at that time, apparently, C dot has to approve that before we can do that. Is that still in the offing to do that, Jeff?
Yes.
As part of what you'll do of this consideration in the future for landscaping and shrubbery?
Yes.
Okay. Jeff, check.
What are the city specifications for the non-motorized trail? Just kind of generically?
It's typically a 20-foot wide easement, and this will be a multi-use trail, where it could be bicycles and potentially equestrian as well, and hygiene-walking equestrian trail. So, really, with the plating, all we require is enough space, and then we're looking at maybe a 10-foot wide actual finished surface.
That's the point of the question.
And there may be some additional subsurface, all the specifications for this trail will be developed.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions in background to get me up to speed as well. There was a site plan approved for this by the planning commission before. At the time, that site plan, the activity was governed by a zoning ordinance which was socially modified. So, the site plan was required to have stricken from it references to very large storage areas and such. Has a new site plan been prepared that reflects the new ordinance, or is the site plan that we placed still one reflecting the old ordinance?
It did submit a site plan in performance with the requirements of the ordinance that approved the site plan, and it made all of the changes that were recommended by it.
Okay, so that means really to proceed with a, to proceed build with a site plan that had large RV storage, you have to revise the site plan? Because our site plan did remove references in it to the side of larger storage, is that correct?
Right, and then we changed the zoning.
I understand. It looks like we have a comment.
Well, just a clarification. So, one of the notes that was in the ordinance that is on the site plan is that would not, it had to do with the 300 square feet as far as the size of the unit, and the note was written in a way that if that 300 square feet was changed, that the site plan, then we could include indoor RV storage. So, we don't, we didn't, we don't have to come back and ask if the code was changed or amended.
Yeah, aside from the notation, as I recall explicitly along the back portion of the storage, the drawing had large areas.
We took all that off.
Those were taken off.
Those were all taken off.
So, they're going to have to be put back into a revised site plan, I would assume, before you actually do it.
Well, I don't, I don't believe so. Lore could address that, but it's just the buildings, like any other building.
Yep, and this is the site plan, actually, that was approved, and they don't have to notate what it is for, whether it's RV storage or not. It complies with the current municipal code for the uses, and it complies with the ordinance. The ordinance was deliberately written to be flexible.
Just a, the, there's two unplatted portions of the site here, the southern one. Actually, I got a picture right in the show.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, it is landlocked, so to speak, right? There's no access provided for it, and I gather that that's okay here. In my experience, or historic in other places, I would never approve a plat which subdivided a piece of land that had no access to it. There may be some understanding with the Saddle Club and the new owners, how that'll work. Does this be considered or discussed, or?
It has been considered and discussed, and...
And the note was written in a way that if that 300 square feet was changed, that the site plan then, we could include into RV storage. So it, we don't, we didn't, we don't have to come back and ask if the code was changed or amended.
Yeah, aside from the notation, as I recall explicitly along the back portion of the storage, the drawing had large areas.
We took all that off.
Those were taken off.
Those were all taken off.
So they're going to have to be put back into a revised site plan, I would assume, before you actually do it.
Well, I don't, I don't believe so. Laura could address that, but it's just the buildings, like any other building.
Yep, and this is the site plan, actually, that was approved, and they don't have to notate what it is for, whether it's RV storage or not. It complies with the current municipal code for the uses, and it complies with the ordinance. The ordinance was deliberately written to be flexible.
Just a, D, there's two unplatted portions of the site here, the southern one. Actually, I got a picture of it right in the show. Just to clarify, it is landlocked, so to speak, right? There's no access provided for it, and I gather that that's okay here. In my experience, or historic in other places, I would never approve a plat which subdivided a piece of land that had no access to it. There may be some understanding within Saddle Club and the new owners how that'll work. Does this be considered or discussed, or?
It has been considered and discussed, and maybe the applicant might want to describe a little bit about what was, what he's looking at with this particular site, if he wants to get into that now. But staff does know that this is landlocked, but anticipates access from Morning Sun Drive or from this private driveway that goes into Walmart. So it would come up here and access here. That is what we understand to be feasible and developable.
But there, there is no requirement of Woodland Park law that be the case as a matter of practice. We just say, okay, we hope it'll work out. That's.
I thought it was a federal law that you couldn't have any landlocked property.
It just seems to be a bad idea.
So I'll address that. We are going to execute an easement across Woodland Village that, for the Saddle Club to provide access, legal access to those parcels. And we, M3XP2 owns Woodland Village, so we can grant an easement. And that is something that Mr. Mahoney and the board have asked us to do, and that we will be doing that.
Can we add it to one of the requirements?
We could certainly add a require, a condition, that the easement be provided prior to recording the plat.
Just, just like the one for Trall Road, essentially.
Right.
Yeah, we're, we're okay with that. I mean, that's our intent, and I know the board will want that, and so we've talked about that many times. It will be a private easement, so it will not be an easement that has anything to do with the city.
I understand, I hope you appreciate the idea. It just sets up something which, who knows, could get, could be a problem.
Not an issue.
Trying to avoid it.
Not an issue. We can add it as a condition, that's fine.
I had another question on the note that the, as a C of the additional ones, that the city won't repair concrete or pavement. Since there's specific reference, it could be fences in these, in the utility areas with city approval. Wouldn't it make sense to say the city also isn't going to replace a fence that was, had to be, that was in the way of an easement as well, so it says, such as parking lot, pavement, concrete, or fences?
We can add that.
If people, that makes sense to me, a little bit as well. And in the true trivia, the small area, the certification of the dedication, the ordinance requires them to make sense. It should say the above and foregoing statement, not the above and aforementioned statement. It wasn't the aforementioned, the small area.
Where is that?
In the dedication statement, the, in the notary giraffe, it should say the above and foregoing statement, not the aforementioned statement. And that's just from, that's, that's already required in 1224 and 80K of our ordinance, just a word today.
Anybody else? Not having the public hearing, correct?
Oh, yes.
You are?
Public comment?
It's not here. Anyway, now we'll open up the public hearing.
Comment.
Comments. And we're going to get to you, because you've got to get up, give a speech. You just don't know that yet.
On this, this particular case?
Come on.
Okay.
You get to come up to the microphone?
Yes.
Name, address, serial number, all the above. Pull that down, Ann.
My name is Ann Ish. I live at 804 Stone Park Lane, Apartment 105. I'm also on the Pike's Peak Regional Council of Governments, representing Green Mountain Falls, and I've just started learning about all this. But my question would be flood control, you know, with more building into Fountain Creek, and I'm not sure, I don't hear real well. So I just wondered, you know, I just wanted to stress that, as, as I know you're all aware, with Fountain Creek coming and everywhere with all the things, and if they're paving the parking lot, if that would create more runoff, I just don't, I don't know, I just thought I would raise that question, and not to block anything, but just to express my concern.
Laura, would you like to address that? I'm drainage.
I certainly may.
I don't quite understand what you were explaining, but there's something.
So the applicant's plat is proposing two lots. The first lot is going to be the buildable lot, which is Lot 1, which is 4.75 acres. Tract A is 1.17 acres, and you can see in the proposal that that 1.17 acres includes the entirety of the floodplain and the floodway, and that will be protected and will be unbuiltable. None of the development in Lot 1 will drain into the floodplain. They will capture all of the drainage within the lot and release it at historic flows, and all of that drainage proposal will be reviewed with their zoning development permit when they come in to construct.
That's great. Well, I appreciate the explanation. Thank you very much.
Ann represents this Green Mountain Falls, the Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments, Citizens Advisory Committee that I sit on as well, so we see each other once a month at, down in the spring. Thank you. Anybody else? Any comments? You always do.
Come, come to the podium, please.
Oh, you got to come up here.
Hello, this is Bob Loppe, 109 Coraline Street, work for TMJ News. On the staff recommendations, D, I wasn't sure if I understood what you said there. The note five, is that to add that condition, or is that, you said, to remove it?
We believe that it's no longer necessary. Our first proposal was to add it, but we have since discussed this with the applicant, with staff, and we don't feel that note is no longer necessary.
Really?
So we don't.
It's no longer necessary to, for the, the city to not be obligated to improve Fountain Creek floodplain, floodway for erosion of Fountain Creek? It's not, you shouldn't be responsible for that, the city?
We don't own Tract A. It's a question of ownership, and if we don't own it, it's implied we don't have any obligation at this point.
But the owners do.
Well, the owners own a piece of floodplain, so there are implications to that ownership, and they are well aware of those implications. Plus, they're proposing a development that won't have an impact to the creek with this development.
Well, that doesn't, you're, you're explaining that the lot will not drain into the creek, but the creek still drains from up above and may flood into that area at some historic level.
And the applicant is well aware of those risks.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Anybody else? Nobody else will pose a public comment? And if it comes to us for any final questions you may have, of staff or applicant, and we'll, if that's none, then we'll go on to discussion within ourselves and read to a Looking for a motion? Any more discussion?
A move that we approve, the final plat number 18003, Woodland Park Saddle Club final plat, with all of the various conditions that have been articulated by staff and accepted by the applicant during their presentation.
Including the ones from our commission?
Yes, thank you.
I second that motion. We have a motion and a second. Call for the question.
Thank you. DeVoe?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carrick?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Henlund?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Yes.
And Schroeder?
Traider.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Item B on the agenda is rescheduled for September 27. Okay, from that, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Any reports? You always have reports.
Just that we do have a meeting on September 27.
Okay. Anybody else ready to do the order?
I've got a question concerning the nuisance law or ordinance that was going to be going?
We're going to do that.
Oh, we're going to do it now?
We're going to go now for that. So at this point, we'll adjourn this portion of it and go to our work session down below. Everybody, we need a motion for that? Do you want a motion for that? We don't need a motion for that. Four-minute body break, then we adjourn, then we're done. Okay?
We're stepping up.
Yeah, we're just, we can kill these now.